There's no discussion with a vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two abstains, abstentions. Motion passes. Presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period, members of the community. All right. Have the report for Mr. Tetro, court enforcement.
I spoke with David Burnier, the guy who owns the Yellowstone Billy on Oak Street last week. And he reassures me that that thing's coming down this fall. He acknowledged that it's gone on too long and too many excuses. Last year it was too wet, this year it's too dry, there's hornets in it. But he acknowledged all that and I says, "Well," all I can say is tell them what you're telling them. So he said that he's adamant that it's coming down this fall.
What's our next step if it doesn't happen?
Well, the next step would be to go through the rule of unsafe buildings and then you have to get the attorney involved. It costs money then, so. You know, I told him that by the end of the month, if nothing happens, then he would force our hand, basically. So he acknowledged everything I said and he agrees. I mean, I, you know, it's not like the guy's trying to get out of it here. Timing, I guess, is everything. The other thing, I spent a good part of the month here with the bird feeders, if I have nothing else to do. Bird feeders are allowed in the village. Feeding the birds on the ground is not allowed. If the pigeons come, I can't control the pigeons. I mean, I don't know what everybody wants me to do with this. This is a mess and a half. There's a lot of bird feeders around the village, the pigeons just don't go to one, they go to here. Some people complain about it, some don't seem to bother them, but right now it's quiet this week. I don't know about next week.
The place that you're, I guess, in question, is it possible to move the bird feeder?
I tried that approach and that was not well received.
Well.
I mean, I do go there a couple times a week to reinforce it. You know, we can't put the bird seed on the ground. I do realize that sometimes the bird kicks them on the ground, but I think they're probably getting a little bit of help here, too.
Well, maybe when it gets cold, the problem will be mediated.
It's been quiet for a week, it's sort of a neighborhood dispute, I think. Third thing is that we had a zoning board meeting, we did not have a meeting, we did not have a quorum that night, so we have to reschedule it. So, other than that, a few building permits off and on. And the last thing, I've been reminded again that you want a written monthly report. I'm working on that. I've got a book, I'm writing everything down, I do all my phone calls, all correspondence, all that stuff.
Well, it's something that we can keep.
No, but I have to do it here and the other places also, so I'm trying to get everything together. So I have a system where I can track. I mean, I got a hard time remembering what I did two days ago, never mind what I did September 1st and try, you know, write a report. So if I don't write it down when I do it, I, you know, I'm getting old.
We all are.
So, other than that, we do have a shared services meeting tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock to discuss the ongoing water in the three communities. So hopefully, some positive stuff will come out of that tomorrow. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, the board have any questions for Mr. Tetro? Thanks, Mike.
Just a quick report. Village will be flushing hydrants starting Monday, the 15th of October through Friday, the 19th of October. 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. As we experience twice a year when we flush the hydrants, sudden discoloration can be expected. It will, it will go away. Fall pickup days, Wednesday, the 24th, and Thursday, the 25th. Brush no larger than an inch in diameter, clear plastic bags. The brush must fit completely in the bag. No loose brush will be picked up on this pickup.
Great. I just interrupted, so. We decided at the one meeting, the last meeting that we were talking about the brush, that we would allow one pickup load of brush per household, one time pickup, okay?
All right. Want to go through that again?
The village will pick up one pickup load per household, and that's it. So if you have it, you can put it out, none over an inch in diameter.
Three inches and loose?
Loose, yes.
Up to three inches.
Up to three inches in diameter.
Okay. No garbage is to be put into the bags, leaves, lawn debris will be picked up if it is bagged. Reminder, the November board meeting has been rescheduled to November 5th at 6:30 Village Office. The meeting is, as always, is open to the public. I'd like to congratulate Donna Barkum for completing the five fall NICOM training schools. We have benefited from that already. The community garden will be cleaned this week, the fence and signs will be taken down. Thanks to all the gardeners who took a plot and grew fresh produce. And thanks to those who donated fresh vegetables to the JCO food shop. The community garden will be ready to go again next spring. We will appoint a playground committee this evening. Thanks to Karen Gresinda and Bill Hoagall for volunteering to co-chair the committee. Fundraising letters will be sent soon, asking for, excuse me, asking for donations to make this playground, this playground dream, a reality for our residents. We will keep the public informed of our fundraising progress. Check out the village website and Facebook page for regular updates. And I would also like to thank Janine Posang and Katie Barkum for filling in for Donna and Monita while they attended the NICOM conference in Lake Placid. Did a very good job. Thank you, ladies. That's all that I have. Trustee Tremblay?
I really don't have anything this evening.
Trustee Gresinda?
Nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Trustee Tremblay?
I don't have much to report this evening either. I do have a, you know, a community event. The Columbus is going to be sponsoring the New Orleans Tier Food Drive again this year. It is going to be next Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that's October 5th, 6th, and 7th at Price Joffer. Appreciate your support, can you help support that?
Very successful last year.
It was very successful, yes. And there's 169 families within the town of Champlain that are part of that same school. So, these are the children that signed up.
I know, I see the numbers with the monthly report from JCO. It's eye-opening.
It is.
Thank you. Trustee Garrett?
As far as the playground movement, applying for grants, a lot of the grants are closed for the year. They'll reopen again January 1st. Did put in an application to Walmart today. So there are still a few grants that are ongoing, or monthly grants that are available for us to get funding through. Looking for volunteers who want to sit on the playground committee to help form ideas and where we're going to move forward as far as equipment and layout and whatnot. So as many people who are interested, we'd be happy to have you come on board to discuss that. The main focus of this grant is health and wellness, a lot more grants are available that way. So as we're catering to our, all of our constituents here by having fitness things available for young and old, it does open a lot more doors for us. There was one site today that I really liked, peaceful playgrounds, anyone who's interested in looking at it. It kind of spreads things out a little bit more and offers a lot more physical fitness activity. Kind of in a unique way, Larry and I were talking about whether we can lay concrete or something down as long as it's a little below the earth. I did not hear back from Rodney, I left a message. But I'd like to pursue that further and, you know, discuss that with the committee. It just seemed really interesting how it was laid out. This unique approach, not the typical playground, you know, there's still typical playground equipment, but also pulled in so it hits every age group category a little bit more. And also spreads out, so proven fact that it reduces bullying and kids fighting for equipment as it's spread out a little bit more. Travel time from piece to piece is taken up as well with the kids. Very interesting philosophy to it. So we'll continue to pursue that. If anybody knows of any local grants especially, or state grants, please let me know. I will apply for anything and everything. And as I said, come January, February, there's a whole list I've started creating that we can apply for. We'll just keep, the other 50 match, you know, what we put in, they'll match. So, anyway, I think it'll definitely go forward.
Well, I think the inclusion of adult workout stations, too.
Yeah.
Getting more, you know, adult involvement down in the center of the village.
And by catering to the whole family, too. You go as a family, you know, with all the different activities and everybody has something to do there. So you're keeping that family unit, which is kind of getting lost these days, in the forefront, having something available for everybody.
If it's called, of course, it'll be.
Yeah, that'd be good, of course.
Interesting.
Have you established a meeting tonight for today?
No. No. So he's going to point officially and then schedule that time.
I think we'll all, if I can make it, we might schedule something.
Yeah, I wonder if we, as a board, if we can be committee yourself to another committee.
When, yeah. We oversee it, yeah.
Yeah, I think you can. I don't see a conflict there.
I don't care if we close it or not.
Anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Seems like an appropriate time, isn't it? I'd like to request an executive session to discuss a personnel employment issue with the board. Bring it to the board's attention and come in front of that and finish up the business. Have a motion, please.
So.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
He wants water, then?
Donna, there was no motion, it's a discussion only for the board.
Okay, I have a motion to come back and then.
Yes, a motion to come back. Come out of executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need a motion to come back into the regular meetings?
So.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, come back. All right, we'll have the report from the clerk treasurer, please.
Everyone has their tax revenue report for September. And we also got a water and sewer billing. Water was $54,005,2869. And sewer was $90,41359.
Is that about everything?
Yes. I think I have one more thing, I'd like to thank Women of the World, they donated two more American flags to us last week. So we didn't place our one in the park.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Will you be doing a thank you letter to them?
Yes.
Anything else for you?
No.
Presentation of warrant, pay the bills. Have a motion to pay the work, please?
Hello?
Have a second?
Second.
Let's see, we have some add-ons here?
Yes, in the amount of $5,505.58.
That's because we moved the meeting data.
Meetings, of course.
Of the week. Any questions on the warrant? You'll notice on the first page, down, it's voucher number 127, Dex Auto Parts. The Department of Public Works Group changed the brakes and rotor on the Ford pickup. You notice the bill, 31689. If we had sent this out, we saved ourselves, by having it done in-house, we saved ourselves approximately $600. So thanks for that. Any questions on the warrant?
Most of DUC what the 1870 deposits are, yearly, give the ratio.
Questions, we have a rule call, please.
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Gresinda?
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Have a report from the superintendent, please?
You all have a copy of the work log. Most of the stuff I was going to say, he's already said it. We save all that money on the truck. We put the plaque, the stone, in the park from Abu Dhabi, that's all planted. And we planted a tree that Mayor Martin Laura donated to the village.
And we received a nice thank you letter from Richard Fabro, thanking the crew, the GPW crew for taking care of that mine, Abu Dhabi. It was a very nice job.
We were raising some sidewalks, trying to level them back out, some had sunk. You'll see when we pull into the driveway to St. Mary's parking lot, there's a few sidewalks that are broke there. So we measured it today and I'm going to do a hundred foot sidewalk down through there. Put a piece in it because it broke up and they keep driving back and forth on it. I'm going to replace that piece of sidewalk.
The church or the school?
The church. Up from the rectory, going up the hill. We're going to be flushing hydrants next week, we've got pickup. I called for some sodium aluminate for the wastewater plant and it went from $0.30 a pound to $0.64 a pound since June. I ordered enough that's going to get us through, I have a guy that's going to come, go through our plant and if there's, same company, but it's better stuff and it's half the price, because I told them it wasn't going to pay what they wanted. So I'm going to work on that. Probably next week or a week after, he's going to come up. A lot of the town switched to this other stuff.
Different channel, but?
Yeah, it's, it's, what it does, it makes the stuff in the tank more solid.
Comes together.
So.
And you go through a barrel of that, how often?
Every two weeks.
It's a standard charge.
So.
Saves some money there.
Three months, it costs us $2,000. Stay where we are three months, it'll cost us $4,000 and we have to have the wastewater plant. I'll work on that, see what we can do. We read the years last week, just a note, I got a couple phone calls and people, some people, their water goes a little higher. I had, I told them to check and make sure that their old dial at 10 o'clock on the meter, if that's spinning and you're not using any water, you've got something in the toilet running or something. Just because you don't see the water moving in the toilet bowl doesn't mean it's not going down underneath your rubber seat in the tank. So check that. Some people were using $150 for the water and it goes to $213 and they forgot that they had their things running for their flowers at night for three weeks. So it's just little things, check them. Some people don't hear, you don't hear water running underneath, so. And if you need something checked, call the office, we'll go check it and see if you can help the local. And that's about it.
Have any questions for Larry?
Larry, would we be able to put into your schedule for this month to take a look at preparing the area for the ice rink ahead of schedule so that when we do get cold, we're ready to move on that instead of, you know, February?
Yeah.
It'd be great.
Down on Elkman Street?
Yeah.
Correspondents, please.
Letter to Robert Bertram regarding his request to water service at 36 Moore Street. Correspondence from Team Service Local 687 regarding contract negotiations.
Any discussion on the correspondence?
There's a lot of reading, I really think they should cut down.
We're trying. Okay, full business, nothing on the GSA meter? Nope. A bid award for the wastewater treatment plant blowers. We received nine requests for bid specs. We received two bids back. I feel that both of the bids were too high. I'm recommending that we reject the bids and that we go back to our engineer to rework, review, to look at the specifications again and to rebid this process in the near future. I think that is, I think we can save some money by doing it this way. So I'd like a motion to reject the bids, as have been received.
So.
Have a second?
Second motion.
Any discussion on this? Since it involves, go ahead.
Well, I think that we would have chose to this, given it was too high.
Way high.
So I'd have to say that's the reason for rejecting it.
Yes. We have a rule call on this, please?
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Gresinda?
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. And a letter will be sent to the two bidding. New business, I'd like a motion to approve Bill Hoagall and Karen Gresinda as the co-chairs for the newly formed playground committee.
So.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, under new business, hydrant flushing, 15th to the 19th, pickup dates we've talked about. We received an informational sheet from Casella for rubbish removal. We looked at the two, at the firm that picks it up now and compared it with what Casella was offering. The firm that is picking it up now is less expensive and they pick up just as often and I don't know that we have had any problems.
No, and when we do pick up the bag of leaves, we empty them all out and all that stuff goes to the dumpster. Not the leaves, the bag. Yeah.
How much trash do we generate from here? I mean, if you're talking the two yard versus four yard, I mean, what do we fill a week? Do we really generate that much garbage?
It all depends, it brings up the stuff from the wastewater plant, everything from all of the villages comes here to this dumpster.
Okay, I'm just curious, how much do we generate?
Sometimes it's full, sometimes it's three quarters full, it all depends.
Okay. Just curious.
We don't need action on this, just informational. I thought that we dealt, I thought that I dealt with this last month, I apologize. I'd like board approval to send Terry and Jimmy to attend a snowplow refresher course on the 4th at the town of Plattsburgh. Total cost is $10.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
Well, this was to go to a water and wastewater school. This is a.
Snowplow?
Yep, snowplow, snowplow refresher course, recommended by your insurance carrier. And it's for the total sum of $10 for the day. Apparently Larry called and made reservations earlier for them. They are now filling the third class. So there's a great deal of interest in this, in this class. We had Terry and Jimmy signed up for the first class. So they, I'd like a motion to send the two gentlemen to the snowplow refresher course at the cost of $10.
So.
Have a second?
Second.
Need a rule call for this?
Expanding money.
Expanding money, please.
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Gresinda?
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Also under new business, I would like the board's approval to bid or to go out to bid for a new vehicle. A small dump truck to replace the Dodge pickup. The Dodge pickup, if you go back through the minutes and see, we were ready to put it out to bid last year, get rid of it and the crew in the back stepped in, riveted some sheet metal over the holes essentially made it work for another year. It is now a liability. You can look down the floorboards and see the, see the earth going by as you're driving down the road. It's dangerous. I think a small dump truck, you know, is a lot better than drinking one of the bigger trucks. If we need to go pick up a small load of coal patch or whatever we need to do, the truck will have a plow on it. We do some plowing here, the driveways, the wastewater plant, some of the streets are pushed back, the snow is pushed back with this, with this vehicle. I'd like Larry to develop some specs and put this out to bid so that we can get a 2013 vehicle. We've looked at some of the prices, we're looking at in the $42,000 or $43,000 range. And we have the funding for this, so I think this is a win-win here for the village. Do I need a motion for this?
It wouldn't hurt, I would say, because they go wash it.
Okay, make the motion to bid.
To go out to bid on this small dump.
Okay, one dump, dump, one dump truck. Okay, have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
On discussion?
Oh, sorry.
I just have a question. The funding for this, would a majority of it come out of wastewater since most of it would be coming from there? So we're talking like a 50% there, 50 roads, 50 of general?
Maybe more out of sewer.
More out of sewer?
Yeah.
We've got money, so.
As we keep bidding, the outside septicage coming in, I mean, it's paying for this, so it'll, it's not going to be on the, it's not going to be a burden to the taxpayers. Okay, any other discussion?
Will you also look at state contract?
Correct, yes.
And then you'll get other ones?
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes?
If there's something on state contract, we have to look at it.
Well, that's what I thought, but we don't have to take it if there's something else.
Correct, if you go out to bid, yes.
Keep it local, this weekend. Okay, any other new business?
I have a question I meant to ask Larry. Do you, and I don't know whether you're all looking to do something with, I know it runs into some issues, but. but I would really like to have a porta potty down at the playground area. Um, I know that we had trouble with the hut for skating and whatnot. But if there's some deal, we can work with Morrisonville Septics since they're here all the time anyway. It, it is a convenience, especially, you know, kids, they get all their clothes on and their snow gear and they run, oh my god, oh potty, and then they walk home and they, they miss out on the whole activity. If we have that available for them, um, I, if we can work out some kind of nice deal, I thought it would be nice if we could pursue that. So I, I wanted to get your opinion on that.
That'd be a good idea.
But it would be nice just to have it, you know, it complete. Sometimes you go to the playground with your kid and then they gotta go to the bathroom.
Well, it certainly wouldn't hurt. It doesn't cost you anything to get a quote.
Right.
Well, what we do, like for the, the, the village trust and stuff, I exchange. I take some sewers in exchange for that.
Right.
It's not, it doesn't cost us anything.
Well, that's what I think we could probably do. Be nice.
So you mean like during the skating season and, and once the playgrounds, they have them permanently with the playground?
I, yeah, I would like to have one there so that, I mean, if this is gonna be a central place for our community to be, we really should have, um, a place to, because there's nothing. There's nothing for anyone.
Well, and it could be, it could be moved because your, your rink is down on the, is the rink down in the park?
No, we're gonna have it downtown, so it's up to the light.
It is gonna go back downtown again?
Yeah, back downtown. So it's right there under the lights.
The old A and P stuff, underneath the lights there.
I have a lot of service already there. I have a two quarter inch line that's capped. But we can use some of the old A and P stuff.
Maybe you can get something for us for the next year.
I appreciate it.
I see some management issues there, but.
Right.
I think overall, it'll be, uh, it'll be worthwhile, you know, having something here for the kids. Remember, my kids are young. You stepped out of the car, they'd go to bed.
I know. It's guaranteed, right. And, and I don't know, it's a possibility, Larry, that in the future, I know, I've been looking around at people's parks and everything, you know, with this coming forward and, and most of them have public restrooms. You know, that we could move forward with something. I know it is maintenance. It's a big issue.
It's permanent, permanent.
Oh, that's right, no.
We can't put it there, but we can put it across the road with a lift station because that is.
On the other side?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, something to think about. If you do go to all these places, there is a public restroom.
Yeah, I went to, when I took water samples at Plattsburgh, I went to the one on Ruger Park, there goes the stand down on the hill, looked at their thing and they have a, a facility there.
Yeah. And I stopped off through the Adirondacks and we went away this weekend and everybody's got, they're simple, you know, but it's, it's a restroom. It is very handy, especially for families.
Something to look into.
Yeah, that would be definitely something to pursue. It would be a maintenance issue, but.
Something to look into. Any other business, or before the board? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Ken.
You need the new ones like in New York City that self-wash.